A lot of Godly pause and we thank you for a wonderful.
Thank you.
We're thankful for safety on the highways and we're thankful for our first responders that keeps the country safe and even locally. We're mindful and thankful for the blessings and lives you've shared with us and we pray today we have wisdom for the county and we ask for Godly direction that we might make those decisions wisely and recite. And in this prayer we pray in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Patient's there, first time in the business where the medicine was sent to female and the alterations are correct and if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion in a second, I'll pay for I.
Aye.
Three, zero. Financials, we have payroll number thirteen, calendar year twenty twenty-one totals two hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Claims, one hundred sixty-one in the amount of three hundred nine thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Motion for the financials.
The move. Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
First time in the business.
Scott.
Any bad for weekend maybe?
Um, yeah, it wasn't too bad of a weekend for being the fourth of July. As of this morning, there was seventy inmates are in jail this morning, twenty-five are pre-trial superior, fifteen are pre-trial circuit, fourteen F six and ten DOC. So obviously things have been picking up in the summer, more in the weather months out there, so numbers are reflecting, just still holding steady. We, I think my last report Friday, I've been talking about video court and that project being implemented, that's, should be in effect. I know, I talked to stylists over the weekend and they were dialed in as far as getting things done in circuit court and superior, I think, as soon to follow. So hopefully that project will be done and complete and moving forward. So other than that, other than getting through extreme hot and then mild weather and everything going on with the building, it's been a little more bearable knowing that projects are moving forward and those type of things, but we're hit by the best of it. So other than that, I don't have anything else for report.
All right.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Sean.
Morning.
Morning. Good morning.
We are getting geared up for our chip seal. We're gonna be starting July twelfth. We're gonna start in Rock Creek Township and move into the south. All of our hand patches complete, noone crews are still out cutting side ditches. Today we're starting to prep the berms on seven hundred east between two twenty-four and one twenty-four in preparation for seal coating. The crew's been taking on more work because we've lost a couple employees in the last couple months. So, and two others are out on health reasons. So we, everybody's been stepping up and I just want to give the shout out to the guys working so hard in the high heat community. That's all I have to report.
Appreciate that. Thanks Sean. Nate, we have you next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple different items today. Just one, a quick note, a local road safety plan, something I've been working on with NERC for a couple of months now. I got the first draft out of just last week. It's really not something I'm ready to kind of go through with everybody or make recommendations as far as an approval, but it's just a notice for y'all that we're working on that. Hopefully it'll develop a number of different road safety projects we're gonna try to implement across the county, looking at different safety measures, everything from edge line striping, the passing zones, looking at types of accidents that we have and an additional piece would be to looking at updating our county road section details, looking at standard details that we'd like to turn, implement just for safety across the county and little projects that we can do hopefully to save lives and to reduce property damages. So just a, just a quick note on that, something that's been going on for a little while, hopefully it'll turn into something really helpful for the community. So Bridge ninety-nine, that was our community crossings managing grant award for the first half of this year. I am requesting approval to issue a notice of intent to award and I think Blake and Lisa, you have copies of that letter. I have one here, set up for, just for me to sign, but it's just an intent to award, it'll be a notice to the contractor to finish their documents for the project as far as getting their, not the bid bond, but their payment and performance bond and the contract signed from them and I can bring that to you in two weeks hopefully for signature. We received, it should say on B, we received six qualified bids, I missed the six on that, for the project, which is fantastic number of bidders and interest from our contractors. The low bid was provided by Duncan Robertson out of Franklin, Indiana. Low bid was for seven hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. The actual spread for between the low bid and high bidders, well, a standard deviation would be just about, just over twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Had two bidders within five hundred dollars of each other. So just a good testimony to what we had from both the consulting engineer, the good project. I think that that's really, we should be very happy with that sort of interest of, as opposed to some that are struggling to get one or two bidders on projects. That's, that's fantastic news for us. So I'm real happy with that results. We are under the engineer's estimate, actually under the award amount, so we're actually saving a significant amount of money for the project. I think for us, it's, it's over a hundred thousand dollars, just the local funds that we're saving because of how that award worked. So thankfully with that, we'll be able to go after some more projects here for the next community crossings call, which is my item four. But I'll stop talking. Great. So, yeah, just requesting your approval on sending that notice of intent to award to Duncan Robertson out of Franklin, Indiana.
So move. Second.
I'll pay for I.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Next item is just local tracks, just another informational bump on that. We have a public hearing scheduled for this week on July eighth. It'll be at the four H Community Building. If people have questions, I definitely encourage the public to attend that meeting. I have some answers, but really because the local tracks is run by NDOT, NDOT and its engineers are the ones that should be answering specific questions.
Six P M?
I believe it's at eight P M. It's a late meeting.
Late meeting? Yes, we might ask you to verify that.
See it published though.
Yeah, I've got the notices. I should have wrote the time down on my, on my report here.
I've got seven written down.
You got seven written down? All right. Well, we got three different times. I'm sure the minutes will have it right before we.
You never know.
I'm sure I'll be there in an hour or two hours early anyway. So, no, so community crossings managing grant, I'm starting some applications for projects. I've got two possible projects right now as far as bridge work. Bridge four oh two and four oh three are the ones that I have in the works as far as having plans ready. We're gonna look at doing some road paving projects really in the twenty twenty-two call. Actually, there's a conference call that Sean and I have this afternoon looking at a couple of project alternatives for first of next year. But I know I have one of these plans, I've got the right of way, the other one I may have to fold because of right of way needs. Just wanted to make you aware of that before I pursue it. I'll have to bring you letters, financial commitment letters if you're next to me prior to the application. So that'll be a chance where I'll ask for official permission to turn those in.
Will these bid, bids separately or as a package?
They'll be separate, but if I can, I do.
I don't know proximity, how close.
Yeah, one's, one is in the north part of Jackson Township, the other one is west central Rock Creek Township. So.
Kind of separated.
Yeah, a little separated.
Even though the numbers are.
Numbers are very similar. I'm just doing them sequential as I, as we generate, well, these are essentially new bridge numbers because they are going from small structures into bridges. They're, and they're very similar design and construction standards. So they'll probably bid at the same time. They just will probably be two separate awards.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, road conversions and status update. Usually every, every year I aspire to have an update to you for our road conversion petitions and what the status of the right of ways are. So each of you should have a brief page spreadsheet in front of you that kind of shows the statuses of the road right of way submissions, kind of some recommendations that, that myself and the highway department have for projects moving forward. You'll see here that on this list, we have actually three new road sections that have turned in a hundred percent of the requested right of way. So those include sections of six fifty north between seven fifty east and eight hundred east. Got the new right of way for seven fifty east from six fifty north to seven fifty north. So those are two contiguous project areas. And then I got all the right of way that we need for a section of six twenty-five south from State Road three to Willow Road. So those three sections were added into the list from what we had in, in July and twenty twenty. Looking forward, I've got a little bit of input, this information on the project number fifty-two, which is that four fifty east. There's one remaining right of way, that's a negative one, so I'm short one. The property owner that has that actually spoke with me Thursday last week and permitted to sign it as part of the trust. And then I've got some communication that needs to be done on eight hundred east. I've showed that I'm short two. That actually is contiguous with the eighty-one and seventy-four projects that you have. So for anybody that's not seeing the spreadsheet, that doesn't mean a whole lot, but for the commissioners here, that's that section of eight hundred east from two twenty-four north. That ties in that six fifty north section. So that would be like three, three and a half miles of road conversions altogether if we could get those grouped up. So at this time, what I'm requesting approval of is that it is our plan to start on Oboleep Road and eight hundred east there at county line, those sections later this year. So it'd be after the chip seal season, probably even after portions of the pipe work are done after Labor Day. Working with Sean on that, I think that we've got some additional N V H money that's been coming in that wasn't budgeted in twenty twenty-one. I think some of the fears in the budgets have been, we've been seeing more revenue come in. So I'm looking to put these in the schedule to start those, maybe yet this year, and then start on this half mile section of seven north from Marzine to the west county line and the mile section of two hundred west between one thousand eleven north. Those button up to older projects as well and set that in the schedule. I know we're not scheduling some of the other ones, but I want to leave that open for future selections in, in twenty-two or twenty-three, trying to set our calendar. And we could accelerate that beyond this, but right now, based on what we have budgets, we're looking at really only being able to do up to maybe two miles a year, maybe, maybe three depending on what we have set up. But right now, that's kind of what we're looking at budget wise.
Right, funding's gotta make sense.
Funding's gotta make some sense. So if we were to increase funding to some of these areas, we might be able to accelerate that. But as Sean just pointed out, we're short of E. You've got, you've got, you've got medical, you've got medical leave issues and then you've got situations where people are just taking other jobs. And so that definitely puts a stress and strain on the highway department. So.
As long as we plan on these two, is that the drainage issues are addressed prior, I think, and do a project and cut the road after it's completed with drainage issues.
I put the two on, the two near Veracruz have been looking at for a while and the drainage issues. We've got one actually down by the Ford plant of the river. That's actually, we're gonna stop the chip seal for that. That was negotiated with the property owner. So we're not gonna be putting chip seal down in flood plain or floodway. We're actually gonna work on an erosion issue separate from that. But the other two have some, it's fairly elite in that area. So it's somewhat smaller tiles that we have to have replaced.
Any questions for Nate guys on recommendations?
And I know there's, there may be some in the public that want to have some comment on this, but I think the commitment was made to those two sections for the end of the year, last year. They were actually put off for about twelve to eighteen months already as a result of COVID. So that's why we felt comfortable in making recommendation for the sections we have there. I don't have any questions.
I don't. You need this in the form of a motion to move forward or just?
If, if you're, if you're fine with that, we'll, we'll proceed with that process. And if, if others want to kind of make cases for moving some of these other sections up, you're more than welcome to, to start looking at these others that are a hundred percent. We'll, we'll work on, try to put those within the budget as we have it for earmarking funds for these projects in the future. But right now, we're really kind of capped at about a two mile per year schedule. Then the last thing I have here is just any right of way dedications. I didn't receive any additional right of ways at my office.
I have three.
Looks like that might have been submissions. So recommending approval on those.
So move.
Second. I'll pay for I.
Aye.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I reviewed this bid for our next typical reassessment contract for two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-five. And we have the one bid and it was, they have everything more than qualified. So they have a scoring sheet in here that they pass or fail. And so I did that like I would any other bid, just because this was my first time. And as far as the, what it would cost, it really only went up about seven thousand a year, which I was thinking it would probably be more because they keep adding more services to over and above what, what we actually need. But it's like continued education which we need in our office, especially when we can't get out of the office as much. With COVID and everything, a lot of our conferences where we get our education was canceled. So having the vendor give us the education that has helped us keep our levels up. So I'm happy with that. And also they do give us legal advice for if we have to go to the state and defend our values, which I've been really lucky so far. But I see with the trend of everything going up and up, that we are gonna probably have some of that coming in the future. People are getting a little restless with the values. So with that said, I'm asking if you guys would approve the contract? And then if it's so, I'll let them know and they will get the papers that you need to sign, I guess?
I looked over the, since the last meeting, I looked over the bid one that you sent me. I didn't see any place for anything to be signed.
Right. I guess I have to tell them that it is accepted and then they'll send me the paper. Because I just sent the bid.
And who signs that? Do you sign off on it or the commissioners?
I think the commissioners sign it. I was looking through like the old packets I had from prior assessors and it was like you guys that signed. But you know, if there's any, I don't know, this is my first time.
You have their documents.
I want to do it however you want me to do.
And what contractor is that again, vendor?
It's Nexus Group.
Right.
Yeah. And they handle my sales disclosure verification, my new construction and all the data entry as well. And again, the reassessment, which is on a four-year cycle.
Yeah, they go way back.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have a problem to prove that.
Awesome. Okay.
So, so if they send it and it's for the commissioners to sign, then you bring it to commissioners? If it calls for the assessor to sign it, then it's just.
Then I can just sign it. I'll let Lisa know when I get it and that way you guys can, she could maybe put me on the agenda if I need to come or I'll just let you know. Is that okay if I send you a copy and I'll send you for a copy? She's gotta put it on gateway if I sign it or something.
Need a motion to the effect.
So move.
Second.
I'll pay for I.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Kelly. Molly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this, oh, sorry. This is our annual spreadsheet. Some of you have seen these before. So I did color code it to help you maybe identify where I'm talking a little easier than just black and white. But Citizens Against Drug Abuse, also known as CADA, we have funds each year that come in through court fees related to drug and alcohol offenses. And so the state has some stipulation that they request that a quarter or twenty-five percent of our funds collected each year go into the categories. They're on the left side, education prevention, that's in the green, treatment intervention in the blue and judicial in the orange. The other category is our administration. We do not have to meet that twenty-five percent, but we cannot exceed it for other. We collected in twenty twenty, twenty thousand dollars, five hundred and forty-four and seven cents to these fees. And with that, we put out a grant application and community agencies and organizations can submit grants to combat drugs and alcohol through education, treatment or judicial efforts. And so this spreadsheet shows who made those requests for us, what the title of the project kind of explaining a little bit what it is, and then how much is requested. And then the far right column is how much we are recommending that we distribute to those particular grant funds. This year, most of the grants were needing the qualifications completely. There were just a few that had little parts that we didn't get to qual, or that didn't qualify. So there's a few that were cut based on just parts that may have not have counted towards that grant. As you can see at the top, the total requested was twenty-four, almost twenty-five thousand dollars. So obviously it was more than what we had to get out. So we did have to cut. So some of those cuts were just like a percentage overall for all of those grants in that category. Like treatment intervention, everybody qualified. So it was just a five percent cut on each grant so that we could come up with that total of the minimum requested. And we did move some around a little bit. If we had a little more, we could put into treatment and prevention and judicial, or not treatment and prevention, sorry, education prevention and judicial got a little bit more this year. So this is our annual report. We will be submitting claims once these, the additionals get approved tonight at council. These will be submitted as claims to the grant. I welcome any questions.
It's good like every year, right?
It seems easy, but we do take a lot of time.
It looks like.
Considering.
I was gonna say, you have to.
Well, you do.
Be fair, as close as you can.
Yeah. I'll make a motion through the grant request.
Second. I'll pay for I.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thanks Molly.
Thank you Molly. Blake Poindexter, up next.
Good morning. How's everyone doing today?
Good. Fine. Last week we had a board meeting and Commissioner Dill was there for
the twenty twenty-two IDOC grant community corrections. Craig and I did meet Thursday after lunch, laid on that. We did the edit points, reviewed them. And then Thursday afternoon, we emailed them back out to the commissioners and the full board.
Any feedback from any?
No feedback. I've been told.
Scott's seen it.
So you know, they were just small edit points, grammatical things, which I appreciate because the J RAC funding committee in Indianapolis does rate us on grammar and sentence and tax, believe it or not.
Kevin shaking his head.
Yes, they've gotten that way. So you know, today I'm here to ask for the commissioners to sign the letter so we can e-file the, or our electronic filing with the new good grant system. DOC did change grant process and software this year. We've been able, and I'm going to be able, Steve Huggins and Seth Wicker on the council, a week or two to go over what we're doing with the county budget. We are finally on par timeline with DOC budget and the county budget being done at the same time. It's only taken thirty-one years or thirty-two years.
Synchronize that years ago, but.
We've all been begging for it forever and they finally at least have gotten it done this year. Huge step forward. So that should take away any of the staggering of having to deal with salary ordinances and the county budget process. So you know, we're done as is submitting. So that'll be parallel going forward unless they change something next year. I, hopefully they will. Does commissioners have any questions on that?
So you guys probably got it in email.
Yeah.
Let us see your Friday.
I have.
I do not. Second.
I'll pay for I.
Aye.
Three, zero. If I could just have your signatures so we can scan for that letter to go in with the packet. Just some operational notes. We were having trouble with our alcohol vendor. I had dropped using their unit. It was a Bluetooth unit that worked with Bluetooth on the cell phones and vendors. They were doing video feed, pics for videos of people taking tests. It was just not working. A lot of our vendors were using T-Mobile or Mint or all these other providers. And unfortunately, we were getting difficulties with the size of the video, trying to push through the Bluetooth and then into the cell net. We have new company that we've been using two weeks now, two and a half weeks now, and they're right this company in probably in about three, forty minutes to do a follow-up with us. Whenever we do have trouble with technology like that, we try to update it as quick as possible. And we've added two other companies along with this current company. And my officers and I have to look at everyone, decided this was the one we felt more comfortable with. So far, we're not having any troubles like we were with the previous companies. So every so often, we have those software issues that creep up. After so long of trying to struggle and work with them, we look for an audible and start checking other companies out there and seeing who's got a newer, maybe better system than what we're currently using. So last year, we updated our transmitter vendor to a better transmitter system as well. That's something we do every year. We go through every one of our vendors, take a look at it, check pricing, check quality, check efficiencies. So we're always trying to reduce operating costs where we can while getting the best quality that's offered out on the market. So. Thanks Blake. Thanks Blake. All right.
Right here.
Thank you. Rick?
Yes.
He's next.
Me?
Morning.
Good morning. Well, to begin, this is all on the M H M P plan and the adoption, correct? What they're asking, and I don't remember this being so much done the last time, but I didn't have a lot to do with it at that time. What they're asking and what Roy is working on is an adoption part of that multi-hazard mitigation plan, M H M P plan. Every township in Wells County, no?
Every incorporated town.
Incorporated town.
So towns, towns, cities and counties have to adopt it.
Okay. And that, and that's where we're at. And they change these things year and year. When I sent that to Roy or to Lisa, I think in the beginning, I remember, and then she sent it to Roy and then somebody started getting this finally finished. And with what it does, if a disaster happens within the county, funds will come from FEMA and the state after locally is observed and then to help take care of it at that time. And without this adoption, FEMA will not touch it. So therefore, in that case, then some towns would lose funding over anything that might happen throughout the area. I hope that helps explain.
So what you do is you take this to every incorporated city or town or whatever in the county and have them sign so they're on board?
Yes.
Actually, the plan is on the EMA's website.
Yes. It's, I brought a copy.
So chapter six talks about adoption, what you have to do to adopt it. So to adopt it, each, each local government unit has to adopt it after you had a public hearing. So it's not simply sign a resolution. You've got to advertise a hearing on it and then the local government unit has to adopt it. So what I prepared for the county today is for the commissioners to approve it, but you know, set it for hearing. And at your next meeting, then sign an ordinance or resolution showing that the county has adopted the plan. And this, this, the, the suggested form for the ordinance. And this, this, the, the suggested form for the ordinance is in, is one of the exhibits in the, in the plan books that basically should have been done last year. I didn't check 2015 or the last one to see if, if they changed the procedure or what, but.
They have. Well, I was talking to Blake a while ago, and I mean, he's up against a lot of things that I'm up against similar to. I mean, every year, they change something on in a way to go about doing it.
So, so this, this has, you know, Lisa sent it to me a week ago Thursday, and so I looked at it, and I drafted a letter and sent it to all the local government units. I've heard back from Markle and the town of Nito, and talked to the Clip Treasure town of Nito. I sent her the notice form, and she's already sent it, and I've seen it already in the news banner. So they've already published their notice, and they're, and they're gonna do that. And Markle, the same thing, didn't have a problem with the Markle Clip Treasure.
So once we get it back, then we have a public hearing?
We advertise it and have your public hearing next meeting.
Gotcha.
And then sign off as far as the county.
Correct.
But all these things need to be eventually sent on to Indianapolis or FEMA or whatever.
State and then FEMA.
To qualify for FEMA funds, or you gotta start the process over.
Correct.
So.
And I don't think we want to do that. Because we did, we started this in 2020, technically 2019, and then throughout the whole year of 2020, we was working on it, and a lot of it, I was waiting on the state to get back with me on a lot of things. So, I mean, even saying that, I mean, up until now, I mean, we're just about half through of 21.
Well, they sent you an email saying, you know, they, they know that your plan was approved in July, so you got a year to do this, and I don't know when they, it wasn't that long ago they told you that, and you sent it on to Lisa, and Lisa sent it on to me, so it breaks screwing, but, you know, that's, that's it. We gotta.
See, some of the things they used to do down there at this stage, they're bringing back on us here locally to take care of a lot of. So it's kinda, you know.
So the, the form of hearing that, that I prepared for the county, I've already, already sent off, a suggested form to the local government units. I, I talked to the city attorney and told Tony Crowell, this needs to be done as soon as possible. I'm not worried about Tony looking at it, and I'm not worried about Austin's attorney looking at that, other than he was on vacation, so those are the next biggest organizations. But we've still got, you know, Fair Approves and Craigville, and so everybody's gotta do this, so I'm trying to make it as easy as possible for the local government units to figure out what they're supposed to do. Advertise it for a hearing, needs to be advertised once. And then after you've, at your next meeting, after you've had noticed the, the hearing, sign the resolution. So that's what it's about.
Do you plan to have it on the agenda for next week?
Other than for you to approve it and, and direct me to advertise it for hearing next meeting?
All right. Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, we'll move on to monthly reports.
I have the Lit Economic Development three-year plan. We talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, and you made suggestions. So I have put those suggestions in the three-year plan, and I emailed it to all.
And I, well, I know, and in the, in the past, what we've always done is we've set up projects accordingly, and as things move forward, you know, it always is in the process. It's a moving target, and there's times that they get amended and moved around, but in generalities and speaking, moving it forward, here's the broadband picture of it. And.
Yeah, exactly.
And because there's, there might be shortfalls here, there, that we need to work with.
And we redo it every year.
Right.
So it's, like, even though it's a long-term plan, it's tweaked every year, so.
There's, there's a step every year.
Yeah, yep, every, yeah. As much as we wanna try to keep that moving down the straight and narrow, sometimes we get a little roadblock here and there. We got them in.
It's life, right.
You know?
It is.
You need that form of motion.
Mm-hmm. That's resolution number 2021-12. If you wanna.
You should do that.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve a resolution 2012, 2021-12.
I'll second. On paper, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We've had talk of vaping and modifying the handbook to include vaping and nicotine products.
Skip over the library board?
Oh, oh, I did. Excuse me.
Backtrack.
Yes. Um, the library board appointment is gonna be open August 15th. Person who is currently serving, Robin Junior, does not want to renew her term. So I have two applications for that position, and Sarah would like to fill out as soon as possible so she can train them so that they're ready to take over that position on August 15th. I have the applications in your packet. Can you say their names or anything?
Yeah, I understand. Maybe I'm not. Both were residents of the county. One was from the county and left and came back. And he? I don't know. Out of the county, heard he's worked in the county for a good number of years.
I know there is requirement that they have to live in the county.
I think you found that out.
I did.
Exactly. We had one other one.
I said, hey dude.
Backtracked.
Aren't you moving?
Oh, yeah.
Make this motion, or do you wanna wait till next?
I'd personally like to review this a little more before we do that.
At the next meeting?
Is that on pause? We will go to vaping.
We will go to vaping. So, um, yeah, we would have to amend the ordinance about the tobacco and add vaping and nicotine products to the handbook.
Is that just like a one-page re-update, update, or is the whole book after we've done?
I would just make a.
Paragraph.
Yes, and reference the new ordinance.
That is currently, it's probably only two sentences in it.
Yes. Wells County has a no smoking and tobacco ban policy for all public buildings. Smoking or use of tobacco in any form is not permitted anywhere on Wells County's property per ordinance 2004-07.
We would add vaping to also.
Vaping and nicotine products.
Vaping, that includes nicotine-based vaping products. So you'll tweak something, give it to Roy, or?
Can't everyone look at it?
I, I think that you should adopt the new ordinance, amending it. Probably easiest to amend the prior one, and then that ordinance gets put into the employee handbook. I mean, we, we, one example, we, we had a appeal of a unemployment claim, issue of subordination to a department head. So we went to, I went to pretty great detail in terms of defining, I think it was a class two offense, so that was in an ordinance, but then that was put in and amended the handbook. So it's, it's kinda like you, you pass ordinances from time to time, and eventually those are gathered and sent to the publisher because the county's required to publish a compiled county code of ordinances, if that makes sense. So that would be my suggestion is if you want that covered for me to draft an amendatory ordinance and send it to you for consideration at your next meeting. Hey, you had a series of complaints on this.
Questions, yeah.
I have no problem looking at a draft that you put together.
Yeah, that's a form of motion.
So I'm gonna.
Second. On paper, aye?
Aye.
So moving forward in that direction.
I have had all the departments fill out the 2020 statement of salaries and wages, and I have emailed those to you, and you can review those, and if you would like to make any recommendations to council, then do that before August 20th. I did email all of those, you know, what Adam I have on here today as well.
I looked at it a little. Turn that later. Thank you.
Other than.
I'm sure Roy will have comments on all of the other.
The following three?
Yes.
What's next?
Next is the highway garage.
We closed on the purchase of the acreage from Mossburgs a week ago today. So the county's now the proud owner of that ground. Things that need to be, I'm surprised you didn't call me, but adjoining landowner to the north, Victor's would like.
He called me.
Oh, he did.
Two or three times.
Well, maybe no. I tell him I'm later, Blake's management, so now that you own it, you can consider rerouting that drain, and, and the issue was, and, and this was first explained to me by Jared Holland, you know, that there's a, there's a private tile that comes from Victor's farm on the north side of 200, and it crosses and goes on to Mossburg's property and kinda meanders straight south to it hits to an actual legal drain or legal tile. And what Victor's wanted to do, and, and what you may want to do also, is eliminate that private tile by moving it to the west side so that you're not eventually building over it.
Correct.
You know, and, and so they would like to do that also with respect to the tile on their side, and they've been pushing for the county to do that so they can do their, they wanted to do their tile and have it connect, so I said, well, let's let the county buy it first.
Right.
So, reporting to you that we did close that transaction.
I can tell you the figures are looking at giving us a quote of what they anticipate their expense will be.
Okay.
And Jared was also, we're going to provide a quote, so we have two quotes to compare. Okay?
One of the, one of the things Victor's offered was a easement over the south thirty feet of the, of that ground on the north side of 200. There's one other property owner, Mr. Falk, and he also bought additional ground from Victor's, so he bought from, if you look at GIS, there's a residence there, he, if you extended that property to the east, to Adam Street, he bought that additional ground from Victor's. I've spoken to him about the easement and explained the benefit to him for the easement is the county may well put in sewer and water line there along this south property line at no expense to him and enhance the value of that property. It's not just a residence, but now it might be seven acres that he could maybe develop for a commercial reason. He assumes not to be interested at the time, so if somebody writes a big enough check, he might change his mind on that. But one of the questions he has was, okay, if you extend utilities, does he have to connect? And I looked, and, and there is a county ordinance that says that if it's, if there's a municipal line within, I don't know, 300 feet, 200 feet, he would have to connect. I had heard there was an exception to that, and there is, but it's for a functioning system put in after 1990, and after he had just told me it was put in by his folks in the forties, I said, well, that's before 1990. I'm smart enough to figure that out, so I think regardless of whether your system is functioning or not, you would be required to look up. Plus, if you said, no, I won't sign it, I'm sure Mossburgs would on the south side of the road, the county owns the other west half, and he's still within 300 feet of his property line, so he'd have to connect in either way. But he was wanting us to waive the tap fee, and I said, that's, that's not the county's prerogative, that's the city, so we couldn't help him on that. But I thought the extension of utilities across this south line was, I thought, a big enough carrot that I would jump all over that. So anyways, we don't have an easement from him on that yet. Yet, we do have from Victor's, but, you know, if you can either get one by condemnation or simply route it on the south side, which would involve us at Mossburgs, so I didn't see a problem there. Anyways, that's the status of the utility easement. I don't think we've had any discussions with the city about the extension of utilities anyways.
Working on that too.
Yeah. That's all I've got on the county highway garage. You know, I reviewed.
Contract with Amoresco, we've got that, but that's the jail project.
Right. Bring that up now. Do you wanna bring it up now? With the jail, throw up the, that was just our agreement with Amoresco. We started a year and a half ago for the project to move it forward, 'cause contractors are holding what, pricing until August 1st? Is that correct?
That's for it.
Okay. And we've set up the 2.7 million in ARPA funds to go towards that project, and I believe right now, momentarily, the question was raised if they are justified in going towards that, and Roy, we've had some discussion, but I think based on council, coming out of Indy with Barnes and Thornburg, that we are getting that in writing, I believe, to be done.
I don't know about the ARP. I've had an engagement letter that, that you've not signed off on. Since it has to do with the jail, I don't know that you've selected bond counsel for that.
And that is, right, and that's working through with the council through bond re-management. They would like us to, the council and a team effort to move forward per their meeting last month. A lot of moving parts going on right now. So I, I guess the, the first thing was council getting a bonding group with bond re-management. Is that right? See, plus approving of their contract as commissioners to move it forward. Approval on the Amoresco agreement to get the jail moving forward, 'cause we've had our numbers in holding contracting prices. And three, I know we, I don't remember if we approved it or verbally did, the 2.7 in funds to go towards the jail, and if we in fact need that, if we need a resolution to that states, yes, that's what that money is going towards. And then to make sure on the backside that that money can be applied to 2.7, which we have been, we know that is justifiable to do.
It's locked in, we spend it, guaranteed.
Right. Now, I've put all the pieces in the, in the pie here. You guys figure out where it goes.
Figure out where.
For signatures.
I said before, when you, when you, you've already passed an ordinance creating a fund, and Lisa had to prepare some things for the state to be able to receive the money. That has all been done, but that, that ordinance and resolution called for council and the commissioners to come up with an American Rescue Plan or whatever. And it's so I, my thought was that, that council and commissioners need to agree on the plan, which may well include 2.7 or, or whatever it's gonna include, rather than just, I'll go through. than just, I'll go through that. I'm assuming since the suggested ordinance that, NICO, NICO sent that out, or was it the county group?
Well, and the commissioners dictate where that money goes.
I think, I had some discussion with, with council president Huggins, that I think it may have to be appropriated once, once the funds are there, but I'm just saying, we don't have a plan yet, I think you need a plan.
So that would be the plan through a resolution?
Do you guys have a plan, have you mapped to the?
Yeah, okay, so the plan would be the 2.7 is our plan, which we've spoken.
Group that was supposed to be.
Right, with, with two council people and.
As far as, we have not decided in that group to make a recommendation just yet on 100% use of those funds.
But the first 2.7 would go towards the jail and then the remaining amount.
It could, it could.
Yeah, and then the remaining amount's what we were going to work through you guys on to figure out.
There were some other ideas that were brought up in that, that meeting. Well, Nate, Nate brought up RSD.
Right.
And, and talking to Mark Burry, he said, well, the state's got a program where the state uses some ARP money and the county puts in some, and you can change that 1 million to 10, I mean.
Right.
Multiplier effect, so I'm just saying that there, there's a range of things for which that fund can be used, including bonus pay or extension utilities, I mean, we just talked about water and sewer, so there are a, a need, I think, for, for the commissioners and council to discuss and come up with a plan. And if the plan includes the use of those funds, fine.
I think we made it pretty apparent, I mean, like you said, your group to put that together, I think initially because we know where we're going on this jail renovation, and we know it's already etched in stone in contracting costs to move it forward, that's why we talked about the first 2.7 to go towards that, because again, the, the increase in cost. And then the remaining amount that we get in on the second pay would be through, like you're talking about your RSD and what other projects you would want to go with, but that was going to offset our first renovation with the jail, because I think it's almost got to be in two projects, the jail verse, and the highway, the way timing's coming.
I mean, I, I looked at the temporary regs on use of ARP funds, and it includes COVID-related expenses for congregate living facilities, including incarceration settings, and then another one, expenses for quarantining or isolation of individuals, so they, they may be, there, there may well be sufficient justification for the use of the 2.7. I'm just saying, I didn't tell you that, and I didn't sign off, and I think before you spend the money, council, first in that area, should be able to sign off saying, yeah, we reviewed the documents, and that's an appropriate expenditure of the 2.7 million.
So Mark, we've been working with, a little bit with Jake on that, some of, just in passing comments, has he got something set up that we can look at?
I sent him an email and asked him to put it in writing.
Okay.
He's going to send us an email and put it in writing.
That would justify the 2.7?
Yes.
Okay, I think that would probably help.
It was a summary that we wrote up about what it says in the ARPA funds.
Right.
On there and what's related to that, and that applies to it. And so we were very conservative in our approach because of the way the HVAC system was set up in the booking, or the rooms right after the booking of the holding cells, as well as the booking area, was a COVID nightmare, the way that it was set up.
And we sent that document last week to Chris or Wood.
I would see that.
Did you send that to everybody, I don't recall?
I, no, I, I think you have a copy of it. I'll send it.
And the document was what, Brad?
It's a summary indicating why we are using the funds for ARPA and what applies to the grant itself.
And how, so we broke out the project in.
Oh, you broke it down.
Part of that project.
Is that the one by years? I, I had an email with something that we wanted to capture everything at one time, not over 15 years, or is that a different email?
We provided.
That's different, Mark, but who did you put it? I'll, I'll send that to you.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm not suggesting that that's not an appropriate use whatsoever, but I think that we need to collectively, between council and commissioners, take our time and determine if that's the, the best use for those funds at this time, because we may be able to fund that without using all of those funds.
Oh, yeah.
So that's it, I'm just suggesting that we may have other things that we can find uses for that money.
Sure.
And, and maybe part of it, maybe all of it, I don't know, I think it's a little bit early to say that all of it should go towards the jail at this point.
You know, I, I don't have an issue with that, Steve, at all, providing we get this moving to the jail.
No, I don't think that's going to be a deal.
Okay, that's cool, no, I'm good with that, I, I would.
The Amoresco contract doesn't require you to use our funds, they have suggested that may be available.
To offset.
Correct.
No, I'm good with that.
It's not going to hold things off of timing.
Yeah, there's a lot of creative financing avenues open to us, and I think that that's probably a wise decision.
You need to be open to those.
So it's not necessarily a discussion of if we should move the HVAC and those other items forward, it's a discussion of which, which funds are going to be taking care of that, and as far as the ARPA funds are concerned, I mean, we've had that discussion, there's also been a concern, if maybe some of those parameters will be changed or modified here on us, and we don't want to get kind of caught in that mess, so I, I mean, depending on what council does, I mean, I don't have a problem with moving those items forward, just maybe where it comes from.
And I appreciate that, I really do, because I would, as, as we sit here today, the 2.7 was just kind of a bogey out there.
Sure.
And hearing the conversation, I really appreciate that, I really do, and so we don't have to just stand tight on a 2.7. Like you said, there might be other avenues that can do that, and I'm, I'm really happy with that.
Now, that's not a, that's not a bogey that we have to say that it has to go.
Perfect, that is so nice to hear, because we just didn't know.
That's kind of what I was waiting to hear from the group.
Yeah.
To hear back what you guys wanted us to do and.
From a fiscal end of it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just trying to, we got to go, and now we're hearing this is good, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
I would see what, what documentation you folks have that is justifying that ARPA funds could be used for that type of project, definitely want to see that research, just your email, please.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that way that'll take off that big amount off of the table.
Yeah, we can share that then, in our committee with President Huggins there.
Well, that's good.
And help us make some more clearly defined decisions.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Takes a lot off my plate.
Do you see this all being resolved before those price holdings that we add on August 4? Or should be?
I hope so, it better, we need it, it has to get moving, we need to, we need to get something, I think we need to sign to get it going, and then everyone can look at the way these ARPA funds can be spent otherwise, like you're saying, Mike. But I personally think we need to move on the contract to get it going, so you can submit to these guys, hey, you know, the pricing's held, we're moving it forward. We got, we otherwise going to lose traction again.
Yeah, because once we receive a notice to proceed from the commissioners, we then can issue a letter of intent.
Right.
To our subcontractors while we are preparing their subcontract agreements.
Yep.
So that, so that they can then lock in with their suppliers.
Right, right.
Especially on the roofing.
Right.
I mean, I mean, that's the big thing, that they're trying to make sure from their suppliers, letter of intent is okay, we can issue a purchase order based on Amoresco's letter of intent, so we can get material.
Right.
Locked in, or, I mean, that's, so that's.
It would be helpful from council's perspective to minimal cash for those needs, I don't know how much is down, how much is, you know, how these projects were.
Yep, so you'd like to see a schedule of values?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So we know, because we might be able to leverage some of the COVID relief funds.
Right.
To, to help pay for some of these early.
Paying down?
Down payments.
Yeah.
And, and maybe reimburse in another way.
Right.
So it's just a, a perspective.
And you've got a 10% requirement, once you've given them the notice to proceed.
Yeah, those kind of things.
And then after that, it's a partial payment schedule?
It is a schedule of values, so I'm good, is that something you'd like to see by tonight?
Do you have it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll work on it, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's.
You want me to email to Steve what, what I've reviewed, I've got it tabbed and highlighted and this and that.
Yeah, and if you're comfortable with what we provided back to you last night.
The commissioners are okay with me sending it to council? Then you're reading off the same page we are.
So what we'll do this afternoon, what we'll do this morning, is that we'll go ahead and pull, because we provided you with the contract information, there's appendices that go along with that, we'll compile the whole document.
I already did.
Well, there's even more, there's, because there's the appendices that are referred to within the contract.
Yeah, but I put, but you sent me those too.
Yeah, yeah, and we sent you the appendices, yeah, I mean, that's everything.
More than the 58 pages.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, so you didn't receive, okay, so.
I may not be able to read through that.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay.
I'm more concerned that it might not. It might say, too big to send.
So we have ways to be able to get it.
Well, I could have been Dropbox before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, but then you guys would also like to see a, a, a schedule of values, is what I'm hearing, correct?
What's the schedule of values?
Schedule of values would show what, how we would, how we would break the job down, and over the term of the project.
Okay.
I mean, there's the 10% mobilization, right, that you're referring to, that's in the contract, but then we provide a schedule of values to show the whole project costs and how that would be, based on completion of, of those individual scopes of work, that's how we invoice per month.
Right, you're, you had a lot of attachments, one attachment was the partial completion or whatever.
Yeah, so there's a, yeah, so substantial completion is, is more like, once we complete an ECM.
I thought there was a periodic progress.
There is, there is periodic.
And that's what we'd be paying for within 30 days or whatever. I think maybe what might help is, is more on the ARPA, not that it has to do with signing the contract, but just.
More from, from this, from this Mark German.
Eventually. But that's, that's more how it's going to be paid for, rather than should it be signed.
That's right.
I mean, you need it, you need it to come out.
So then with that in mind, so you'll get the information on how you can go spend ARPA funds from them, you'll get that, so for your group.
Yeah, they'll send that to me.
Yeah, so with that in mind, then, move the agreement forward, and then you'll be able to see how the funds are set up to do that, and then we really don't need, I mean, Jake can send us stuff, but at this point in time, working with council, there might be other ways to go about it.
Great.
It's a long way to go around the barnyard, Jessica, did you get all that?
I think so.
Verbatim? I would make the motion if you would entertain it, Mr. President, to move this forward with Amoresco on the jail renovation project.
I'll second.
On favor, aye?
Aye. And thank you, Steve, for sharing the willingness to want to work outside our box of what we thought we were going to have to work with, that helps a lot.
And you're reading some of my, correct.
Yeah, next, Lisa.
County Farm.
Okay. County Farm, I don't, I don't have the appraisals back yet, but I did get a response from the awardee saying, well, he was waiting on the survey, the survey being the survey of the cemetery grounds, I didn't have that, but by the way, Joel Haynes going to survey that Thursday?
Thursday, Friday?
Thursday or Friday at 9:00, and so he's going to go out and do the field work anyways, but Fisher Gerber had drafted or sent me a drawing showing taking out some more ground, but it's mostly in the floodplain and woods, but it did have a 1.73 acres, it calculated the acreage, so I sent that to Neil saying, well, I don't have a survey yet, but here's a drawing of what it's going to be, and it's 1.73 acres, is that enough for you to do it, and I haven't heard back from him, but it, it doesn't really bother me, because the only thing you're going to do with the appraisals when you get it is to determine a minimum bid. The, the second thing, in looking over the minutes of the last meeting, I was to draft a letter to auctioneers, and I did do that and send that to you, so once you will pay that, what I intend to do is, is check with the state, because they keep the licensing, and find out who's, who are the licensed auctioneers, at least in Wells County, if you want me to use Allen Adams or somebody else, or anybody in particular that may not be on the list, so be it, I had suggested a response by August 1, but that, that date can be pushed back, but the point of the letter was to say that the county's in progress towards selling it, here's what we have to do by statute, but the statute also says you can employ a licensed auctioneer, you can do additional advertising above and beyond the legal ads that you're required to get, which is two times, so I know I just sent that to you yesterday, so if you haven't looked at that yet, but once, once you're satisfied with that, it doesn't commit you to hire anybody, it just says you're, you're considering doing that and are interested in receiving their proposals as to how they would market it, and their ideas as far as compensation.
Do we have to have the appraisals back before we engage that?
No.
No, I, I don't have a problem with it, I'd like to make a motion to prove that.
I would, I would second that.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
In talking with at least, I did talk with Rick Johnloes on another matter, I wasn't scouting him on, on that, but he was asking me about it, and said, well, that's probably what we're going to do, sent a letter asking for suggestions, he suggested after props are off, so I'm saying, I don't know that we're in a time crunch, but we want to make some progress on it.
I have one of, I know in all those flurry of comments I was making about the bond re-management that the council would like to, to see moving forward with our help, has Roy seen a copy of the agreement?
I emailed it to Roy.
And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, Roy, but I know we need to approve of the contract.
I got it this morning, I did pull it up to see it's addressed to council.
Yes, it, it lists council members in there as well.
Right, and it would be. Conversation that I know they're aware that needs to go, since it was dealt with with the council, but now we're moving it into the commissioners' realm for contracts, I think other than just the name changes, if in principle, for the sake of moving things forward if need be, with name changes, if, if passes your litmus test, I would make a motion to approve and support of that contract teaming with the council.
It was addressed to council, and I reviewed it and made some notes, and council, President Huggins suggested I forward that to Oscar, and I, I don't, haven't checked to see if what was in there, but my thing is, if, if you're satisfied with, with that, with bond consulting as far as crunching the numbers, then fine, I mean, if it was going to be a situation where each of you were hiring somebody else to look at it, that would be another thing, but if you're satisfied with that, then I really care if it's addressed to council or commissioner, or if you want.
I just want to make sure it's, it's what needs to be, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it was just some confusion whether council has the ability to sign that. If that if so, we just leave it as it is and we'll take care of it, but wasn't sure if commissioners needed to sign the contract.
The question I had is, we had engaged somebody else to do some of this.
I don't know that you've engaged somebody to run the numbers.
Right, no, not run the numbers, but engaged in last fall, because they had a half an hour phone call about this, so.
Well, you got a, you you had a retainer with respect to Archie Thornburg on the highway garage.
Right.
But but not on jail.
No.
And I think since, I mean, honestly, I don't know how to work in the council's expertise, but again, I think it's like two projects moving forward kind of thing, based on timing, and so I I mean, thinking about that a little bit, I mean, I know we got one here, we got one here, so I think from separation standpoint, I don't think that's, I personally, I mean, I've been around a long time.
I don't have an issue with it, it's just.
It was just, it was a little bit muddier, for lack of a better term, over the months, but we've had a lot of things go through that, so that's, I think we've cleared them out.
Well, it's it's nice to see that county, that council's not only with you, but wanting to move forward.
Right.
I mean, that's a different situation.
Yeah, normally we don't get a push.
Having, yeah, having to drag somebody across the line, looks like somebody can be dragging us. But that's okay, it's just as long as everybody understands what their lane is and and commissioners are agreeable to boundary and and council still is, then I I don't see a need for each of you to employ somebody to do the same thing.
Exactly.
Basically, but but looking at the report that I did get, it looks like there's there are issues with respect to whether this is one issue or two, when you're over the limit, maybe having to do a lease. So there's there's a lot of moving parts that need to be resolved.
And that'll come down to the council.
Okay.
So.
So I will look at that and and respond to you yet today, Steve, if that's okay.
So a motion to approve of that pending, yeah, I would make that motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Thanks for indulging the labor of that project going through, my name's Nate Nate Rumschlog, and I got pretty good at that. Even put Nate asleep on that one. Takes a pretty tough person to get that done, right, Nate?
I don't want me to.
Ah, yeah, there you go.
All right. Anything else before, right?
Well, last thing is the ARPA coronavirus, but I think we've already talked about that.
Yeah, horse is in the ground?
Yep, it is.
Okay.
Roy, just kind of backing up a little bit, are are we going to be able to get the appraisals done in the next three days?
It's it's my hope, I don't know, he said he was waiting on, one of the appraisers said he was waiting on the survey, and I sent him that to say, oh, I don't see why you need a survey. Subtract 1.73, you know where it is, floodplain and woods, give me a number. So I will do that, but if he if he has to have a survey, then Joel Haynes doing the fieldwork Thursday, I believe, so we'll even have that.
Friday at night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have all the burial sites within the.
Designated space?
Yeah.
I think so.
Do you want to talk to anyone else about?
Blake was right, we both booked in late.
Just a question.
You know, as long as they say they can do it by the end of this month, I'm not too concerned about that, because I said, the the point of the appraisal is for you to.
Right.
Fix amend the price.
Sure.
If if the statute.
No, like you said.
You had to have appraisal, I wouldn't do that.
Right. Okay. I don't have anything else.
Yeah, anything else? Anything missed? A lot of long stuff we covered, Lisa and nothing.
Nate and I were going to mention, the meeting Thursday's at six, you were right, we went both in late.
Perfect timing on the meetings part, meeting's over.
Very happy that that's correct, so.
Audience wide open, let's, have any comments or anything, anybody? You have something, sir?
Uh, I've got an opinion, I mean, my name is Mike Stompigan, I live out on 700 East, and I'm interested in chip and seal that road. And I know the process, and Hook Brothers owns so much land out there, they won't give a right of way, so the only thing I can do would come in here and ask the county about it and see if they're liable or think about it or whatever.
700 East, that's the old 301, correct?
That's a, I'll buy it, I see it, and they they already told me they won't even agree to it, for whatever reason, neighborhood is like it. If I talk to them, if the majority of the say so, if I would be that petition, we, you know, it'd probably not be approved that way. So the only thing I can do is come and ask you guys about it, and tell the situation. And I'm talking about between 1,000 and 1,200, then part of their land on that, they would never approve that, they've already told me that.
We could check and see what the existing right of way is, see rights of way have been established over the years through various methods.
I think it's 60 feet now, 15, 30 on each side.
And that's what we're requesting, I don't know offhand what the existing right of way is, we can look into that and try to see. As of right now, what we've been doing is pursuing the areas where we can get additional right of way. We have exhausted essentially those projects at this point, but once we did, it's always been our intent to start looking at creative ways to do other road conversion projects where right of way is either difficult to obtain or not possible. I'm not one to recommend eminent domain or condemnation for a part of that if it's not necessary, but you have to make a pretty good case to do that if you're going to get a court take right of way.
You'd have to have an appraisal to figure out the value of the right of way.
The cost, the cost going down that road just explodes the the cost of the county of doing road conversions, so that's why we have. It's easier, it's easier to vest the funds and chip and seal for stretches of the road where the adjoining landowners are cooperative and wanting to give the the county the ease, but then to say we're going to force that or or litigate it or condemn it.
Yeah, if I don't speak, you know, ask you guys about it, I'll never get done in my life. I got that strategy, I see, you know, I'm just asking.
Well, we'll investigate it, and Nate or Sean will get back in touch.
Either that or get a bigger right of way on the other side of the road.
And move.
Jerry Parker said that land on 9th and.
It may take some effort on all of our parts, kind of, you know, because I think I know some of the situation as to why they've said absolutely not, but and all we can do is kind of make some.
See what you can do.
And then maybe maybe we talk to their respective officials and start reaching out to them.
Okay.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, nothing else from the audience? I'll accept the motion, everybody.
Agreed.
Thank you. All done? Thank you, appreciate it.